Welcome to this evening's work session. First order of business is to ascertain whether or not any of the board members like to talk about any of the preliminary items for next board December 20th.
Yes, I have a couple things. One is concerning the internship with the school system. Can somebody tell me about that?
That's not on, that's not on the agenda.
I thought you said for the...
Not the preliminary items on the agenda for the 20th. Is that on?
It is.
I'm sorry. Okay, where's somebody from HR? I'm sorry. Nobody here from HR? Can you shed any light, any light on it?
We can save for next week. I just sent you...
Yeah, Commissioner, one of the things we're doing, Director Ambles ended up tabling some items. She was getting more information from the school system, but certainly we'll, we certainly will reach out and get those specific questions for you as it relates to that relationship.
I'm sorry.
You're good. No, Director Ambles ended up pulling that item. There was some additional information we're getting from the school system, but if there was some specific questions you have about that, I'll make sure HR reach out to you.
I just want to know what it is and what's our part and what is it?
Yeah.
What does it involve? And how much of the county does it involve? I can wait.
Yeah, I'm trying to. I don't remember off the top of my head the details. I thought I had my sheet here, but...
I'm fine, since the chairman was asking, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Got it.
Okay, and the other is pertaining to the magistrate court. Is that eviction diversion?
Program?
Yeah, is that something different from what we already have in place or is it the same thing?
It is, it's a different program.
Okay.
And so I think Judge Wright Hill is going to come forth and give the presentation as to the value or the, or what she sees as an opportunity that the county can take on and she'll outline that in her presentation as well.
Okay, and I have several of the ordinances that I'll get with Chuck on.
Okay.
That I have questions about. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any others? That's it. All right, well, we will go into our first work session discussion, discussion item, Southern Regional Update with Fire Clayton County Fire Emergency Services. And we have with us CEO of Southern Regional Medical Center, Ms. Ella Lena. I don't, I think this is the first meeting you've been to here, so to the citizens of Clayton County, this young lady here, just raise your hand here is the new CEO of Southern Regional Medical Center. Welcome and glad to have you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Chief.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight with our community partner, Southern Regional Medical Center, to engage in a conversation that will greatly affect this community as we move forward. When we think about the role access to emergency health care plays in a community, it's somewhat unthinkable that a county would not be able to provide those services to its constituents. Allow me to introduce you to our new chief medical officer, Dr. Mark Waterman. Dr. Waterman, if you would please stand. Dr. Waterman is well respected within the emergency services community. He's been at the forefront of emergency medicine for the last 40 years and has spent the last five years as the president of Atlanta Medical Center. He brings with him four decades of knowledge in how to manage emergent patients and the most effective and efficient way to provide services both in and out of the hospital setting. But make no mistake about it, Dr. Waterman is with us today because on August 31st, 2022, the unthinkable happened. It was on this day that he was notified he would be closing Atlanta Medical Center, a Level 1 trauma center and a staple in emergency care for decades to the city of Atlanta and its surrounding areas. Having been in his shoes as a former member of the board with Southern Regional, the decision to close a hospital is not easy and makes for many sleepless nights, but thankfully, prime health care came through at the last moment and saved what is our only safety net hospital in Clayton County. The closure of Atlanta Medical Center South had an immediate impact on our community and our service delivery model. Another closure of a major transport destination for our trauma patients in less than six months will have a deepening impact on our service and Southern Regional to which we have not even begun to realize. The closure of two medical facilities in our neighboring counties has already placed an undue burden on Southern Regional Medical Center as the only not-for-profit hospital south of I-20. That burden will continue to rise and will further deepen the disparity that exists with funding for the care of uninsured county and non-county residents. Southern Regional Medical Center does not get the benefit of receiving tax support from two counties, a city and the state of Georgia. In fact, on the heels of the biggest blow to the emergency care and trauma system in the state's history, only one facility received a much-needed shot in the arm. When asked about funding for other safety net hospitals in underserved areas, health care suddenly became a local issue, yet Southern Regional cares for the citizens of a region, not just Clayton County. So today we bring you a collaborative effort, an effort aimed at addressing what is now a local issue. It has been made clear by many that we are on our own. We've never shot away from a challenge and we will not begin that tonight. If we are to save our own health care system, it will be because of the decisions and commitments that are made by those in this room tonight. Prime Health Care made a five-year commitment to this community and they have honored every word and then some. I've had the privilege to serve on the Board of Directors since day one and we are now in year six of that initial commitment. It's the fourth quarter and we're at the two-minute warning. So please allow me to welcome the quarterback that will help engineer our comeback, Ms. Elena Lena, President and CEO of Southern Regional Medical Center.
Thank you very much for that warm welcome. My name again is Ella Lena, Ella like Ella Fitzgerald, and I am humbled and grateful for the opportunity to provide a very short insight into the health care crisis affecting our communities. Our objective here tonight is to highlight the investments that Prime Health Care Foundation as a nonprofit organization came in six years ago to reopen the doors of Southern Regional and not only reopen the doors to maintain the hospital open in Clayton County, but to provide quality health care for our residents. Tonight I'm going to highlight the investments for our community to bring that excellence and compassionate care, present the needs of our Clayton County community. I am their voice here tonight from a health care perspective. Make no mistake that I'm here representing every resident of Clayton County. I want to bring to your attention that we are in a health care crisis, how our county can be at the forefront of health care reform by supporting an integrated delivery of care. Next slide. In this next slide is a snapshot of Southern Regional as the only hospital, as Chief mentioned, the only hospital south of I-20, a nonprofit health care community right here in Clayton County, the only hospital in Clayton County. It's important to note as the only hospital, this is not the only hospital facing the critical financial challenges that Wellstar reported. Wellstar made a business decision to close two hospitals, 20,000 discharges. Where are they to go? This health care crisis has been exacerbated by the pandemic. Our county continues a very slow recovery. Our residents are struggling to make ends meet. Let's make sure we all understand that this is not a partisan issue that no one is immune from. This is an issue that transcends all. Simply put, these closures have caused iniquity. Regardless of Medicaid expansion or what will come to fruition as health care reform, we have iniquity, iniquity in our county. Next slide. Here in the next few slides, I am going to highlight where Southern Regional began as a nonprofit community and where we are today. Here in this slide, as you all well know, Southern Regional was a county hospital serving this community. We had partnerships by Emory Healthcare System for management and then the unthinkable, just as the Chief presented earlier, the doors were going to close. The doors remained open because Prime Health Care Foundation, a nonprofit arm of Prime Health Care, came in and reopened to this hospital. Not only did Prime Health Care Foundation reopen the hospital, but they invested in over $60 million in technology. Next slide. In this next slide, we are looking at our services that continue to expand. Not only do we provide state-of-the-art technology, but we provide state-of-the-art and the most incredible medical staff as well as clinicians. We have a federally qualified health center that was opened nearby the hospital to assist with health care access. We have a senior behavioral health unit. We have two new cath labs, CT units, and other state-of-the-art technology on the slide for you to see. In the next slide, I continue to highlight the Southern Regional services from emergency care, bariatrics, breast health, diabetes, imaging, orthopedics, and on and on and on. All of these services are here in order to provide the health care that our residents need so they don't need to go elsewhere. On the next slide, we highlight the national recognition, not only by the Joint Commission, but the AHA. We are a primary stroke center. We are a certified and accredited chest pain center. We have a special senior ED to help heal our seniors who come into a very chaotic emergency department. We've been recognized not only by the American Heart Association, but also by the American College of Cardiology. We most recently were recognized by Leapfrog with a quality safety grade of B. On the next slide, I continue to make sure that everyone here in our community understands that the care that we provide is with a commitment for quality and excellence. Prime Health Care would have nothing different. On the next slide, which is why we're here today, there are critical key financial impacts to health care and Southern Regional has experienced three years of unsustainable losses, nearly $20 million a year in uncompensated care. The reductions in reimbursement and most critical in the last three years has not only been the doubled salaries for our nurses and the nursing shortage to care for our patients, but what's most important is that our residents have been pummeled by the pandemic. The unemployment rate leads to uninsured patients. If I am uninsured, where am I to seek health care? Where am I to seek primary health care? I use the emergency department. I use emergency services. There's no other recourse. That is the most critical key financial impact to our hospital. On the next slide, I go through what's very important for all of us to understand is that 60% of the emergency department patients are uninsured in Clayton County. 60%. That's 60% of our patients with low acuity and they are discharged from the emergency department. The emergency patient volume contributes to critical overcrowding and long wait times and we all know that. That's a pandemic here. 45% of the ED patients are uninsured and they deserve access. That access should not be through emergency services. We don't know the full impact of the most recent hospital closures. Only time will reveal that impact. Through all of this, Prime Health Care's foundation continued to infuse millions to improve the health and wellness of our residents. The decrease in access most recently impacted with the two hospital closures is not alone. This was not a recent incident. Understand that according to the Georgia Hospital Association, 12 hospitals have closed since 2013, six in the last five years.
As we continue to look at the impact that the growing health care crisis is causing, it's important to understand that when we talk about Southern Regional proper in the hospital, it's not just a hospital problem. As Ms. Lena discussed, 60% of the ED patients that are coming in are uninsured. As their largest patient supplier, we supply them with 80 to 85% of those patients coming into the ED. So as we continue to see the staffing shortages at Southern Regional, as we continue to see the clog that is happening in our health care system that backs up into the streets of Clayton County. And what that means for us is it creates a staffing crisis of our own. Our men and women are having to work longer hours and they're having to do it with fewer people. As we continue to have fewer places to transport, that means we have to push further and further outside of Clayton County. So if we have to start transporting patients to Piedmont Noonan, that's a four-hour turn time for us. That means that truck is outside the borders of Clayton County for four hours. With the closure of AMC South, which is where we took the majority of our trauma patients, we took over 700 trauma patients there. Where do those 700 patients go now? Grady can't handle that. Our only other two options is looking at Wellstar Kennistone or Macon. That's a five or six hour spend time for a truck. So the more that we continue to highlight these issues, you start to see how it will and is going to affect not only the citizens of Clayton County, but our ability as fire and EMS to provide service. You look at our increase in call volume that's going up. Last year we ran 53,000 calls for service. This year we're on a pace to do about 58. We haven't expanded the number of people. We haven't expanded the number of trucks, but our call volume is rapidly rising. Closure of two main hospitals within the last month. Southern Regional is seeing an increased volume from EMS providers, including Clayton County and Grady. When AMC South closed, you noticed more Grady trucks at Southern Regional. With AMC Main closing, you see even more Grady trucks at Southern Regional. The more Grady trucks that are at Southern Regional, the less Clayton County trucks you will see there because they can only handle so many patients. So we will be forced to take our patients elsewhere. That's where it becomes important that we start to build these coalitions and this programming that we're talking about tonight. Only one Level 1 trauma center for the metropolitan Atlanta area, unsustainable. Potential for a delay in definitive trauma care, thanks to the presence of Dr. Mark Waterman. We're now looking at increased trauma programming within our own organization to be able to stabilize trauma patients locally so that we can safely transport them to further destinations. I see yet another investment on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners to try and sustain health care decisions that were not made by this board, but yet we are all feeling the impact. Increased wait times at local hospitals, you heard Ms. Lena discuss it and talk about it. It's not uncommon for four to six hour wait in hospitals. As we continue to roll out programming here in the county, you will see the efforts that through you and the decisions that you've made for us budgetarily speaking, we'll be able to roll out some programming to start providing some relief to that. Increased potential and delay of service due to the most in need. Once our trucks are loaded and they're at facilities, we're out of trucks. We have to start leveraging our external resources to help us and then of course the fireside of our house, which brings in some other service issues. Next slide. When you look at where we're going, these are currently all the places CCFES transports our patients. You can see that currently we take roughly 41% of our patients to Southern Regional. 60% of the time we're outside the boundaries of Clayton County. 60% of the time we don't have trucks in Clayton County going to our local hospital. It's a volume issue. It's an access issue, but this is a product of what we're starting to see by decisions of these closures. And as Ms. Lena said, we have not yet fully realized what the true impact will be. We'll start to figure that out in the next six to eight months as these patients start to matriculate. As she brought up, 20,000 patients discharged from Atlanta Medical Center. Where are they going to go next? Atlanta Medical Center is no longer there. They're going to have to go outside the perimeter. Next slide. So what are we doing to help Southern Regional? We talked with you about our 4C program. We've identified roughly 2,500 high-utilizer patients. Our goal is to start pre-treating them in the field with our nurse practitioners and some additional mobile medicine that Dr. Waterman is helping us bring to this community. Those 2,500 high-utilizer patients, as we refer to them, account for roughly about 40% of our call volume. So if we can effectively manage them outside of the 911 system, then we can reduce call volume not only to our men and women, but to what's impacting the ED as well. Collaboration with Southern Regional to determine those at-risk discharges, that's one of the things that we've been working on. As you know, with the passage of the Affordable Care Act, if a patient is admitted to the hospital and they re-present to a hospital, doesn't have to be the same one within 30 days, that hospital is penalized. So not only are you going to be penalized for the first trip, but you're not going to be compensated for the second. So it becomes paramount that we keep non-emergent patients out of the hospital and treat them in the most appropriate setting, which most of the time is not in a hospital. That's programming that we're working on. Staffing, we have one full-time emergency services physician. You've met Dr. Waterman. We have 10 advanced nurse practitioners, the only fire department in the state of Georgia to employ nurse practitioners, and we're fixing to revamp how we utilize them and start to bring some relief to our citizens. We have two mobile clinics. One is on its way hopefully from Ohio. So when it gets here, we'll be out in the community doing health visits, health care education, and then of course our robust integrated employee health and wellness that we have to keep our workforce that is committed to this county and shows up every day healthy and out there serving the citizens so that we continue to manage the looming health care crisis. Next slide.
Thank you, Chief. So we're here today to talk about not only the health care crisis, but what we are proposing is going to be health care reform that's going to be spearheaded by Clayton County. The future state of health care reform in Clayton County will be an integrated delivery network between fire rescue and Southern Regional and their emergency services. Clayton County supports uninsured county residents who have no source of health care. That will be part of health care reform that I know our county will support. And what does that look like? Clayton County invests in financial assistance for health care access for the county residents, whether through millage and what that looks like, that will remain for you, the Board of Commissioners. For eligible residents, mobile health systems and community health centers, we at Southern Regional are committed to not only continue to keep our doors open, delivering high-quality health care, we are committed to also increasing the access to that health care. And what that looks like and where within our county remains to be seen. Clayton County will develop the first integrated system of health care to improve health and wellness. As I mentioned earlier, health care should not be relegated to an emergency room. That will not treat chronic underlying disease and illness. That is not the appropriate health care our residents deserve. Next slide. In closing, Southern Regional is a nonprofit community hospital, as I stated earlier, completely dedicated to this community. I am here representing our residents, just as you represent all of us in Clayton County. We are dedicated to the hospital to provide life-saving care. The poor access to health care contributes to the use of the emergency department services. The uninsured deserve more. They deserve primary care. They deserve to be able to come to their hospital and not wait four to six hours. We, as a county, need to ensure we support our residents by increasing access and supporting Southern Regional Medical Center that wants to keep their doors open. Our mission is to remain. It is extremely difficult, just as the two Wellstar hospitals closed and made that business decision. We do not want to be where Southern Regional was six years ago and the pandemic has us in a very different situation where Southern Regional was six years ago. This is not about operations. We can run a hospital very efficiently. The financial headwinds, as I said, between the salaries and trying to pay very high rates for physicians to remain in this community in order to provide quality health care is very difficult. And when you have the high uninsured rate, it is untenueous. I am asking for your support. I am asking that we think through how Clayton County will reform health care. We will be in front of this. Thank you so much. I'm very grateful for the opportunity and grateful to have met you tonight.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Lena and Chief Ferguson for the presentation. You are doing some great work as over at Southern Regional and welcome once again. And I hope a lot of the citizens actually are seeing what gem we have at Southern Regional with all of the technology and the, and the quality of health care that they provide this community and the surrounding community. But also you left out one little accolade. I think it was about two years ago, Southern Regional was voted the 10th best large hospital in the state of Georgia. So yes...
And that is your hospital.
Yes.
Everyone in this community, that's your hospital.
Something to be proud of. Are there questions for Ms. Lena?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you for that presentation and welcome.
Thank you.
My first question is just bluntly, what is it going to take to keep Southern Regional solvent?
Solvent is a bit of a stretch. These are hard times. What we ask is consideration and support, much and similar to what was in place when the hospital was part of the county and supported through millage.
Okay, great. Thank you. And also, and this might be for you or Chief, with the increase in patients, how is this going to, from an empirical standpoint, affect fire and EMS?
So as Ella stated, 60% of their patients are treated in the emergency department. The vast majority of those patients are brought there by EMS. Part of the thing that we realize and part of the, part of the struggle with EMS is when you go back and you look at how the emergency medical systems were created in the state of Georgia, our curriculum falls up underneath the U.S. Department of Transportation. If you look at how we're coded by Medicare and Medicaid, we're coded as transportation suppliers, not health care providers. Okay, which means we're not even recognized for the work that we do. We're treated in the same category as commercial bus lines and taxi cabs. So when you look at how does the increased patient load affect Clayton County EMS's ability as our calls for service go up? Because as, as Ella stated, the pandemic put a lot of people out of work. You lose work, you lose your health insurance. When you lose your health insurance, you lose access to primary care. Where does that leave you? It leaves you with EMS. So where our hands are tied is once you enter the 911 system, we're very limited as to what we can do with your health care needs, which means we have to take them to a local health care facility.
And that's kind of where I'm going. To me, listening to this, we're going to have a shortage of trucks or vehicles. We're going to have a shortage of EMS staff, fire staff. I think that goes into the equation that these are several of the variables that we're going to have to begin to really identify to find out where we're going with that. And that's where I'm going. I know I heard you say something about a four to six month timeframe before you find really a lot of these numbers out.
Yes, sir. So, and that brings the innovation that we're looking at, right, is we realize that the service model that we have now for pre-hospital care is non-sustainable, right? So let's say that this board said, you know what, we agree with support, you know, to go back to answer your question directly, when the hospital was owned by the hospital authority previously, there was a half mill dedicated to that that went directly to the hospital for, for those calls of uninsured. In today's dollars, that's roughly 5.2 something million. And you saw in one of her slides, the charity care or the uncompensated care that's directly related to Clayton County citizens is roughly about $5 million a year. So you start to get somewhere, right? So then when you look at what is it we can do? If this board said, Chief, go buy five new ambulances and hire the people to help with the call volume because of supply chain issues, it's two and a half years before those trucks will be here. And that's assuming that, to her point, because of the increased wages and the difficulty in finding medical personnel, that's assuming I can hire the people to fill those five new trucks. So what we realize and what we recognize is we have to change the mindset for how we're going to provide health care, right? We can no longer sit back and wait for our patients to hit the 911 system. By that time, their conditions have worsened to where there's no choice but to take them to the hospital. So now it shifts to preventive care. It shifts to us recognizing what our comorbidities are in Clayton County and offering an alternative. And that's going to come through like we talked about with the 4C. As we're building a new headquarters facility, that facility is also going to have a clinic in it. So that's going to provide us the alternatives to start providing care in an alternative setting. So this isn't Southern Regional asking for, you know, a bailout, so to speak. It's asking to, to help us become part of the coalition.
And understand, and from what I understand, there's roughly Clayton County, one doctor for every...
3,800.
3,800 patients, where the average is roughly in the county is about 1,000 to 1,700. So how are we going to, in order to keep Southern Regional open and functionally healthy, is there any kind of plan to begin to recruit other primary care physicians, specialty physicians in an area to handle that?
That's a wonderful question because at the end of the day, we need to talk about what tomorrow brings and what... what tomorrow brings and what we're going to do to close that gap in inequity. We are committed to growing our own. We have just actually signed an affiliation to have residents here. So physicians who are learning, we will have a graduate medical education program because we want to grow our own. We want them to come to Southern Regional, have that experience, and we want them to stay here. In addition to the clinic that the chief just referred to, that is part of the plan and has been part of his vision since I met him when I came to Georgia three months ago, Southern Regional, too, will be opening a free health center where I will have physicians donating their time for primary care. My hope, our hope, is that we will be able to change the social determinants based on the inequity that we have in this county. We're not caring for our residents who don't have insurance, who have high blood pressure. You can see that by the number of dialysis companies in our county. Because what happens when you can't take care of your high blood pressure? You have kidney disease. You end up on dialysis. What about when you have diabetes and you can't afford to go have it checked? You end up on dialysis. I have never seen so many dialysis centers until I moved here.
Wow. Okay, so you asked my next question. So there are plans already in place to become a learning hospital?
Absolutely, without a doubt.
Oh, yeah, that's fabulous.
And that's not only for our physicians, but it's also for nurse practitioners, nurses, EMTs, paramedics. We have opened it all up, inclusive of our professionals who want to stay in healthcare and business from Clayton University. Our doors are open.
Great. And my last question, are there any plans to make Southern Regional a Level One trauma center?
So with that, I will share with you that most of you know that the tragedy that occurred a week ago where there was an incident where we had two deaths, they were transported to Southern Regional. The Southern Regional receives trauma patients who cannot be in an ambulance longer to reach Grady, and our doors and our teams have never missed a beat. Our plan is to become trauma-certified. With that, it's very expensive payment for physicians to be on call, and that's something that we really need to evaluate.
Great. And my thought is this, God forbid there were ever a major incident at that airport, especially between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00 in the evening time. The closest and quickest place to get to would be Southern Regional.
Yes, sir. And to follow up on that, that's another benefit that, you know, having Dr. Waterman here, he's the president of Atlanta Medical Center and has run a Level One Trauma Center ER for decades that he's been there, not trying to out him or anything with his age. But having that knowledge here is going to, to Lena's point, it's incredibly expensive to get to a Level One. The first step in that is you have to be a teaching hospital to even start that thought process, which they've made strides. So what our goal is is to try and figure out ways to try to manage that, because she is correct. We do have to take our unstable patients to Southern Regional. My staff works diligently with her staff. We get them stabilized until such time as we can get them out. But to go back to the question about the insurance and how are we working that? So one of the Cs in our 4C, if you remember, when we were talking about it, we now have an insurance specialist that's a part of our community care team. And what her role in this community is, is as we're going out to those 2,500 high-utilizer patients and we're figuring out, why do they not have insurance? Is it that they're eligible, they got frustrated with the process and just didn't finish it? Are they not aware of what benefits they have? So we're closing that gap, and we're spending time to get them registered for benefits. What that allows us to do then is get them into primary care, whether that's a primary care that's affiliated with Southern Regional or another local primary care. The largest issue we have with attracting those physicians is there's not enough insured patients to make it lucrative for somebody to relocate a practice here, right? So if we don't do something about the 40% uninsured, we're going to continue to struggle, and that 1 to 3,800 patient-to-physician ratio is going to continue to go up as our population continues to go up. Because y'all all know there's no shortage of folk moving to Clayton County, right? But the medical healthcare stuff isn't keeping up with it. So part of this is addressing that. So hopefully, we close that gap and make it more easier for Southern Regional to manage the patients they should be managing.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Again, we'll have your work cut out for you.
Yes. Several times, you all mentioned nonprofit hospital. So tell me the difference with Southern Regional being a nonprofit as opposed to, is Grady a nonprofit or...
It is a nonprofit county, tax-assisted. Grady is. I am not tax-assisted. Say it again, I'm sorry.
What about Henry, Henry, what's that, Piedmont and Fayette? Are those nonprofit also?
The Piedmont Henrys are...
I just want to know the difference.
The Piedmont facilities are for-profit hospitals, right? So when you look at what is the main difference between a not-for-profit hospital and a for-profit hospital, most of your nonprofits are your community safety net hospitals, right? They're here to provide a service to the citizens of the county or counties that they serve, and they're not in the business to make money. Now, they're not in the business to lose money either, but their goal is to try to break even or, you know, to continue to be able to provide service upgrades. They have to be somewhat profitable in order to continue. A robot is not cheap. If you're going to attract good surgeons, you got to have the top-of-the-line equipment. A 64-slice CT is a few million, and you got to have a couple of those. So, you know, there has to be some level. But the main difference is, and I think this is the best way I can draw this conclusion for you, if Southern Regional was a for-profit hospital, we would be talking about three hospitals that have closed. Because losing $16 million a year is not a business proposition that will be sustainable. That shows you what Wellstar did. Wellstar was a network of nine? 11 hospitals. They're now down to nine. So when you can share resources, losses, staffing, programming across nine hospitals, and you still can't make it work, it becomes illogical to think that a single standalone, one hospital, Prime Healthcare has one hospital in the state of Georgia, and that's Southern Regional. Everything else is west of here. So it becomes illogical to think that you can sustain that level of loss across it. We've talked about it many times at board meetings. If they were a for-profit organization, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd be having a much different one. So what separates them from it is that the dollar's not what they're here for. Their motto is saving hospitals, saving lives, saving communities. And that's what they've done for Clayton County for the six years that they've been here. So if they were for profit, we would be having a much different conversation.
Okay, now, I have been told or heard or whatever that Grady does get support or financial backing from the state of Georgia. Does Clayton County get that?
You see how I did that?
Her face paints the picture, tells it all.
I do not know the answer to that question. I can only tell you what has been allocated to Grady. And understand this, there's a place for Grady's. And I've had the opportunity to meet all the CEOs in the hospitals, and we all have a place. I can only speak to Southern Regional as the only hospital for prime healthcare here. And I think what is very important is that we don't have a system. We don't have economies of scale. I can't share my resources. I can't pull a nurse from one end to come here or a physician. I have no one to pull from. And we're still here committed for Clayton County, and we don't want to go anywhere.
Okay. Do you all know if any of the other local hospitals, say Fayette or Henry, get support from the state of Georgia?
I will. Thank you, boss. Most local hospital systems are going to get support from the state because there's monies that come through Medicare, Medicaid, and for reimbursement for certain services, okay? So that's a given. What else may be out there? We don't know the answer to that. What we do know is, you know, Grady gets the benefit of tax dollars from Fulton County, DeKalb County, the city of Atlanta. We do know that when AMC closed, there was another 130 million from the state to Grady. We do know that. That was in the news. So that's not saying anything.
So they do get money from the state of Georgia.
Beyond that, it's hard to know. And we didn't want to make this presentation about Grady or about the other folk. As Ella stated, there's, you see the billboards, Atlanta can't live without Grady. Fact, they're now our only trauma center. They're the best burn center in the country. You know, as far as, you know, Southern Regional has a wonderful stroke program. There's only so much that they can do before we have to get them to more definitive care. So there's that need. All we're saying is, and what we're trying to highlight here, is that the stance that healthcare is a local issue cannot be the stance of our collective leadership in the state. Because it's not like the only folk that darken the doors of Southern Regional are Clayton County residents, and Clayton County needs to figure out how to take care of its own. Go up there any day of the week and look and tell me where you see ambulances from. So healthcare is not a local issue. It's a regional issue. And if we're going to make it a regional issue, then we need to talk about regional support. But if we're going to be told we're on our own, that's why we're here tonight. We understand that. We get where we are, and we have a plan to go after it. But we want to be open and honest about the hill that we're trying to climb. One thing that I forgot to bring up during Commissioner Davis's response is, the COO brought up, don't forget about the medical overlay district. This board has taken steps to provide incentives for that corridor between the city of Riverdale and Upper Riverdale Road and Terra Boulevard that encompasses Southern Regional for Meditech, you know, research and development residencies. And we're doing a lot of work around that corridor. So this is kind of where all that begins.
I'm glad that you all are doing this presentation, because, you know, I'm learning something. And hopefully, the other citizens of Clayton County are also learning something because I think a lot of times we, as citizens, just take the hospital and all for granted and thinking that some of the operations that we have here are some of the same ones that, say, Grady may have, or Hughes-Balden, or some of the other hospitals and all, and don't really know how this operation works and all. So hopefully, you know, the citizens have learned a lot. And you all didn't say it, but you did answer my question about what we do not get from the state of Georgia. And what I want to say in that line is that I think we have a meeting scheduled with our delegation. So that may be one of the things, or one of the topics that we put on for discussion, is if they will get with our lobbyists and all, and see what we can do as far as getting funding and all from the state of Georgia, because we do pay state taxes also. And I just think we should be recognized and help, get help also in that medical area. That's one of the things.
And Commissioner, this board made it a policy direction to our lobbyists to also figure out how we can identify additional resources as well. So part of your policy initiative with our lobbyists is also trying to figure out how we identify additional money to support our healthcare initiatives throughout the county.
Okay. And I think if we got a push from our delegation, you know, we vote for our state reps and our state senators and all that, and let them know how important this is, because they may not know. Hopefully, some of them are listening tonight, and that's one of the discussions we can have with them, along with the lobbyists, that if they can push for some bills, push something to go through that will assist, you know, Clayton County, Southern Regional, and all. So I think that would be a really good thing, because it sounds like, doesn't look too bright. Let me just say that. And we really need help. We really need the assistance. We really need the funding.
Thank you, Commissioner. And know that we at Southern Regional are committed. For those of you in the room who do know me, in my short time in Georgia, I have been everywhere anyone will listen, that we are here to serve Clayton County residents, and we need support. And I'm not going to stop. We are committed to Clayton County. We will increase access to healthcare. It should not be through the emergency room. Southern Regional wants to stay in this community. We want to add the services so our residents don't have to go anywhere else for healthcare. And we are committed for that to be the best healthcare. Those partnerships with Grady and others will continue, so our residents have the best of the best. What we need is not only support from our state, but from our Clayton County to support the tragic troubles that our residents who are unemployed, who cannot afford insurance, and others who are on a cusp, who may not qualify for Medicaid. There's a gap there in the programs that exist. We have to address them. The reality is that if we do not, it contributes to illness, disease, and death. If you were to look at your mortality and morbidity statistics, those are real.
And one of the things, too, in closing, and Chief, well, stated a little bit of it, as far as the hospital being a regional hospital. So it sounds like we may need to get together with some others in this region, and maybe some of the other delegations from the local counties and all, or some of the places that you see the other ambulances in healthcare, what do you call it, healthcare centers that come to Southern Regional, that we all get together and try and work this thing out. So it won't be just a Clayton County problem, or a Clayton County problem to be solved, that we can get assistance from all around.
And you hit that there on there. Some of, myself and some of the other metro chairs, especially along the Southern Crescent, have been discussing just that with the closing of the hospital. How can we find a way to support one another in one another's hospitals to try to make sure that our citizens are being seen and provided the best healthcare that's possible? So, yes, that conversation is definitely ongoing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Doctor Anderson.
I'm going to close us out. I just want to say thank you. And I love the word that you used, inequity. You are correct. It's a gross injustice for us to have to deal with this as a county or just through the state of Georgia. Because with that, with AMC closing, that affected the whole state of Georgia, not just Clayton County, not just the seven regions around. That affected all throughout Georgia, that affected us all throughout Georgia. What I want to also close out with, I always say in my heyday, I was a nursing assistant, and I worked at a hospital over in Atlanta. And one thing that they did that was very innovative, they started their own primary care center within that hospital. And so, you know, I just want to challenge us, because I know we can do it. We have South, excuse me, Southside Medical, where they do it on a sliding fee scale. So, you know, use some of those innovative ways and, you know, bringing people in and where they can make payments. And I know everybody remembers the Grady card. We can also, we'll have a Southern Regional card. But again, we need to think of some innovative ways to help our people who need, you know, help with payments and things of that nature. Also, I know Ossoff and Senator Ossoff and Senator Warnock have been very vigilant in giving us money. They've given us $1.15 million for mental health. Let's also ask for monies so we can move forward. Just know that you have our support as a board, and we're going to sit down and come up with every way that we can to move the hospital and the county forward. So thank you for all that you do, Ms. Ella, and we're going to continue to work together. And Chief, I just want to know, as you come, as you come to the different places, how will you let people know where to come and how to come and sign up for insurance? How will we get that out to the public?
We're taking it to them. So as we're identifying that 2,500 number that's been in our system, those are ones that access our system multiple times a month. So we'll be going to them.
And I want people to hear this, that, you know, please look out. We're coming to you. Our mobile units will be coming to you. And again, you know, just look out for it. And I know you guys are going to do a great job at getting it out there. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And know, in closing, that at Southern Regional, we have assistants
Okay.
and financial counselors who are available to any resident who would like to know what they qualify for. We're here to help.
Last question.
Yes, sir.
Our, Southern Regional is working towards becoming a teaching hospital, because you have, you've been in talks with one of the schools.
Yes. Morehouse is one of the schools. And yes, our application will be submitted in May. We have hired our program director already, and her office is ready to receive her, and she will be running our free clinic right there on the property that we are hoping to be able to open in the summer.
And that's Morehouse School of Medicine.
Yes.
So again, thank you for all that you're doing. It's a pleasure for me to be able to introduce you to the community and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Eviction diversion program. magistrate court chief, magistrate judge, Keisha Wright Hill.
Good evening. Okay, I am Chief Judge Keisha Wright Hill on behalf of the magistrate court, here to present on our eviction diversion initiative. From May 5th, 2021 to date, Clayton County has dispersed 7,309,057.28 in rental assistance to Clayton County property owners and landlords for the benefit of tenants with pending evictions. The magistrate court has dismissed 994 eviction cases, which equates to preventing 1,986 Clayton County residents, citizens from becoming homeless. Let me provide some context as to where we are with the backlog and our proposed solutions. When I took office on January 1st, 2021, there was a backlog in all nine areas of law in which magistrate court conducts hearings. Today, we have eliminated the backlog in eight out of nine areas. The only area where we still have a significant backlog is evictions. As I stated when I was here before, out of 159 counties in the state of Georgia, Clayton County has the fourth busiest magistrate court, which is determined by the volume of cases we handle on a yearly basis, which is currently 61,000 cases. With the assistance of the Office of Performance Management, we have met with three different jurisdictions to ascertain the most effective methods to eliminate our current eviction backlog, as well as reduce the number of future filings and eviction setouts. And speaking with court officials in Chicago, Philadelphia, and New Orleans, we have determined one major cause of our huge backlog. The CARES Act eviction moratorium began on March 27th, 2020, and ended on July 24th, 2020. The CDC eviction moratorium took effect September 4th, 2020, and was initially slated to extend through December 31st, 2020. However, it was extended legislatively through January 31st, 2021, and extended again by the CDC through March 31st, 2021. On March 29th, 2021, the CDC further extended the moratorium until June 30th, 2021. It's imperative that you understand that during the moratorium and all the extensions pursuant to the emergency orders in place at the time, the magistrate court did not conduct any eviction hearings. However, unlike the other jurisdictions previously mentioned, as well as many counties in the metro, our clerk of court, for whatever reason, continued accepting eviction filings throughout the entire moratorium. So in essence, eviction cases were continuously being filed but not being heard. This is the number one reason why we still have such a massive number of pending eviction cases. Pre-COVID, we were hearing 250 cases per week. And so when you go from 250 to zero due to the law that was in place at the time, the orders that were in place at the time, for months on end, it caused a massive backlog. From the start of the pandemic, March 16th, 2020, to November 4th, 2022, 35,779 evictions have been filed. To date, 26,518 eviction cases have been closed, which means there are still 9,261 cases for that same time period. Now, how do we get rid of the backlog? I'm glad that you asked me that. I have two proposals. One proposal is more reactive. The other is proactive. The first proposal is simple. We need more judges, so we can hear more, have more calendars, so we can hear more cases quicker. I've done what I can do as chief judge, in that I have increased the number of eviction calendars from once a week to three times a week to every day. So we are now currently holding eviction calendars Monday through Friday. I've also met with the Superior Court bench, who has to approve our judges. They understand our need for additional judges. They have approved for the magistrate court to have four additional part-time judges to assist with the huge undertaking of eliminating our eviction backlog. So we would need funding for those additional judges that have been recently approved. We still have to crunch the numbers on that request. I'm not making that ask today. But I'll be back next month with some numbers for you to consider. The second proposal as to why I'm here today is our eviction diversion initiative, which is a mediation program for our eviction cases. And I do have some packets. Through mediation, both the landlord and the tenant meet with a court-certified mediator with the goal of reaching a full settlement without going to court. The mediator drafts the consent order with all the relevant provisions. Both parties, as well as the mediator, signs the consent order, and it is forwarded electronically to my office for the judge to approve, sign, and file with the court. Once the consent order is filed with the clerk, the case is closed, just as if the case was finalized with a court hearing. The use of mediation has been proven to be effective in resolving 80% to 90% of our current civil trial caseload. The use of mediation has a twofold effect. It can help us, one, to dispose of pending cases that are waiting for a court date, thus reducing the number of cases that need to be heard by a judge. And two, it can reduce the number of future filings that need hearings, as well as reduce the number of setouts due to the agreement by the parties. We are asking that a portion of the ERA 2 funds allocated to Clayton County be designated for the magistrate court's eviction mediation program. Pursuant to the Department of Treasury, both ERA 1 and ERA 2 allow for up to 10% of the funds received by a grantee to be used for certain housing stability services. For purposes of ERA 1 and ERA 2, the Department of Treasury states that housing stability services include goals that enable households to maintain or obtain housing. Such services may include eviction prevention and eviction diversion programs, mediation between landlords and tenants, and housing counseling. Specifically, we are requesting $429,000. This will cover the program's cost for two years, from 2023 to 2025. As relates to the financial stability of the program, the expectation is that the backlog will be resolved at the end of the two years. And during that two-year period, we would be simultaneously collecting data to show the effectiveness of the mediation program, as well as exploring grants and other funding resources. The mediation program is necessary, effective, and is a feasible solution to addressing our current eviction backlog. Any questions?
All right. Thank you for the presentation, first of all. But my only question is, is this program being utilized or in place in any other county or jurisdiction?
Yes. Actually, the jurisdictions that we looked at, they currently use mediation. And I believe the programs that they used, it was backed by the county. Mediation is something that we use and is used in the court. So it's not a new, it's not new. Due to the volume, our current mediation program would not be able to sustain it. But, for example, all divorces that go through Superior Court, before you can even get a court date, you're required to go through mediation to try to work it out. Mediation has proven to be very effective, because the parties, oftentimes, communication has broken down. And so whether it be spouse or landlord and tenant, it's just a matter, the communication is broke. They're not talking. So when you bring in a third party that's able to get the parties on the same page, you're able to come up with an agreement. And it's also even, it's beneficial even if the end result is the tenant moving out. In court, the judge is only permitted to give the tenant seven days. The tenant may be willing to move, but may need 14 days, or may need 30 days. That's something that could be resolved in mediation. The court could not necessarily order it, and it will resolve the case, and the landlord will be able to re-rent the property versus waiting months to get a court date. And then during that time period, the tenant could have already left.
Thank you. Commissioner Hamer.
Yes, I'm trying to figure out the difference between the program you have now and the new program you're talking about, or proposing.
So the current, the program as far as the rental assistance is what you're referring to?
I thought you said you already have some mediation or diversion program in place now.
That's, that's the mediation that goes through, I mean, that, that... It's for the whole courthouse. You understand what I'm saying? So they hear all, they, some of our cases, for example, a lot of our civil cases, it may be a civil case, credit card debt. And so the person may have been sued for a $3,000 debt. They're not disputing that they owe it. They're just asking for a payment plan. That's not necessarily something that needs to go to court, because they're not disputing the debt. It's just a matter of what payment plan that they can work out. So something to that nature. But our mediation, we have 9,000 cases. The mediation office in the courthouse now does mediation for the entire courthouse. All of the judges. So they wouldn't be able to sustain, and they don't have the manpower, because I've already reached out, they don't have the manpower to do it.
And what you're, what you are talking about is specifically for evictions?
Just for the evictions.
Are, are your judges now in person? Are they virtual? You have your hearings virtual or in person?
They're, evictions, they're virtual.
They're virtual?
They are. But we're, we are here 250, as of November 4th, we're Monday through Friday, and we're doing 250 cases a week, which is almost to where we are, where we were pre-COVID. But the problem is that length of time that we didn't hear the cases that they stacked up.
Okay. So will your new program be virtual or in person?
It can be, it can be virtual. And they do mediation now. They're able to do it virtually. The, both parties are able, all the mediators that do mediation now, they have DocuSign. The parties are able to sign, and then the mediator prepares the documents, and they send them to me now.
About how many do they do a day virtually?
For, you could do, these type, you could probably do six a day. One mediator, because that's a lot. And what we, the way we looked at it was an hour per case. So three hours in the morning, three hours in the afternoon.
Yes, I have something else.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, but...
Go ahead.
Because you were asking about, so I have a question, because I just wanted to piggyback off. So I know that you're saying that the cases would come up, the mediators would get them out. But let me ask you a question. How backlog are we with actually serving, like, the evictions? You know, if we get all of these judges, we get all of these people in place, these mediators in place, and then we're backlogged on the other end as far as serving, how are we going to catch up with that?
When you say serving, are you talking about the sheriff's portion? Okay, now, I will tell you, the sheriff is backed up as well. Because during, because during the moratorium, we had to stop. So I, I know now, when I talked to the sheriff's office last week about a writ that I was signing, the landlord has to, you know, do what's necessary to make an appointment. And I asked them where were they at with setouts, and they said March. So even if someone came before me today, the, I mean, they're not going to get put out, per se, today. The earliest appointment they have as of today is March. That's a separate issue, probably with sheriff's office and their staff. But again, if that comes up with them, they would have the same issue. It's not necessarily recident on our hands and not doing anything. Yeah, it's just that...
Okay.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you for that. So these funds are specific for this eviction program. So they're not about distribution of the ERA funds. This is just about operating expenses for the program, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And 250 cases a week, so you're looking at even get caught up, close to nine months, to get caught up at that rate. The question I had is, you spoke about, when an eviction, I guess, is signed off by you. Who actually evicts that tenant? Is that the sheriff, or is that the apartment complex?
The sheriff. The sheriff.
Okay, so, okay, so the only the sheriff...
So I sign the writ, and it's filed with the clerk. And then the property owner needs to take that writ and contact the sheriff's office and see when the next available appointment is. And then the sheriff is there to keep the peace.
Understand, understand. So... It's just confusing, because I know we have a lot of tenants out there, and landlords as well, that are in need of these funds. Is this going to assist us in speeding up that process for distribution of those funds?
This is, this, this is separate, this program is separate than the funding.
Yes. No, I understand that part.
Yeah, Commissioner, so the judge process is only looking at evictions, individuals that are going through the dispository process. What, the money has been set aside with the 6.5 million that we have to expend by December 29th of this year, or the ERA 2 funding that has to be expended by December of 2025. Those fundings are being done differently. So whether that's Melanated Pearls, the CCCS, those other nonprofits that are actually doing community events, that money is looking at those individuals that are not in the judge's dispository process, but individuals that are pre-eviction. And how do we get money to them that might be dealing with money, with rent that might be in arrears? So we're dealing with those, totally two different processes than what she's dealing with.
So what about, I guess I wouldn't call it post-evictions? How do, how are we handling those? Are there, is there any way to begin to handle those, those folk?
So when you say post eviction...
Meaning that they've already gone through court, they've been signed off on? They're waiting to get, they're waiting to get put out.
That's the one I asked, that's the ones that I was asking her about, and the sheriff is kind of bouncing in that aisle. You know, how we...
So in a sense, it's a waiting game until March, they were signed off today or something.
That's if they go through the whole process.
What she is proposing to do is to have mediators to mitigate, or to be able to agree between the landlord and the homeowner or the renter to be able to work out, okay, I know I'm going to get evicted. Let's do it in a way where, 30 days. Agree, give me 30 days, and I'm working myself, work on whatever I need to move out. And get it done that way, as opposed to the sheriff knocking on your door saying, let's go.
And I guess my, my line of question, you understand the program? Because I've gotten a lot of calls within the last couple of weeks with folks that have been evicted, gone to court. And so that's why I was asking the questions in that line. Go ahead, Commissioner Hamer.
Well, this is a little different. I'm, I'm thinking here that if, if you're behind, you know, your office is behind with the evictions, and then we're starting up a new program. Will that put us further behind?
That's what I was asking.
With the evictions?
All this is happening simultaneously. So, so we're having hearings, we're trying to, so that if we have 9,000, if we're able to resolve half of them, or 60% or 70%, that's less cases that have to be heard. That's less, when you're getting calls and emails from property owners and landlords, and what are they saying? I'm waiting on a court date. Why are you waiting on a court date? Because I have 9,000 cases before you. So, and that's what I'm saying. That gap in time, when we could not do anything, even though we weren't having, hearing anything, those cases were still coming in. Now we started back. Now we have to address all those cases, plus the cases that come in every day. So those calls and emails that you're getting, they're asking for court dates. But if I can have someone to sit down and try to work it out, that, and they can work that out, that landlord could at least move forward and re-rent their property somewhere. That tenant at least will have sufficient time to plan and do whatever they need to do to go, as far as their future steps. And we could move and close that case out and move forward.
The other part to keep in mind, Board, that, so the judge is talking specifically about the 9,000 that's in the backlog. There's people still filing daily.
Yes.
So it's, it's still a, it's still a numbers game. Even though we might be addressing the backlog through a diversion program, you still have individuals still filing. So we're trying to capture it on both ends. We're trying to capture it prior to getting to the courts. We're trying to figure out how do we address it while it's in the courts. But more importantly, are there other, other programs and other services that we can provide that ultimately will address it in a different way? So, therefore, we don't have to have individuals continuously going to the court to make the filing.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, Judge.
Thank you.
You have a great day. All right, next up will be Boards and Committees' Update, Elections and Registration, Ms. Johnson.
So, Chairman, as Ms. Johnson comes forward, just to provide, kind of set in the stage, Commissioner Hambrich thought it was a good idea, and we're now going to bring forth boards and committees periodically to our work sessions. One of the things the Commissioner talked about, and the collective of the board, sometime our citizens don't know what the roles and responsibilities of the respective boards and committees, and what responsibilities they lie in providing information on behalf of the board of commissioners. So, tonight, we have two boards that will be providing updates. And tonight, we have Chair Johnson, Chairwoman Johnson handling election and registration. And clearly, I want to give an opportunity for this to be part of our ongoing work sessions to give updates from committees and boards.
Ms. Johnson. Thank you, C. Hall. Good evening, Chair, Chairman Turner, Commissioners, neighbors, and friends. My name is Darlene Johnson, and I am a board member with the Clayton County Board of Elections and Registration. Actually, I currently serve as the chair for the Board of Elections and Registration. The Board of Elections and Registration... Okay, so, I'd like to introduce what we do on the Board of Elections and Registration and what our missions and goals are. The mission of the Clayton County Board of Elections and Registration is to uphold the federal, state, and local mandates, to ensure through efficient and effective processes, and by following applicable laws and established administrative rules, that we enfranchise eligible citizens of Clayton County in the voting process, to provide opportunities for all of our qualified citizens of Clayton County to register to vote, to promote the integrity of the electoral process by maintaining accurate current voter registration records, to be an inform, to be an information resource for the citizens regarding voter registration and absentee voting with the highest level of standard accountability, security, integrity, and maintain the public confidence in the voter registration process. I'd like to take this opportunity, and that does not have all of my board members, to introduce you to... To introduce you to the members of the Board of Elections and Registration. Unfortunately, the pictures are not showing on this presentation, or we're at the wrong presentation. But in the center is myself, Darlene Johnson, serving as chair. We have Board Member Pat Pular, whose picture is showing, Board Member Carol West. Our vice chair is Board Member Diane Givens. And the secretary, Dorothy Hall, is our secretary. I really intended for these pictures to show so that the citizens of the county and all members and neighbors that are interested can identify the election officials. As an election official, you should be able to be identified publicly since you are a public figure. Our vision is to help voters engage in the voting process with confidence that their votes will count. And the responsibility of the board is to fulfill its obligations under the law to the citizens of Clayton County to establish and adopt the rules of procedures, regulations, and bylaws of the county Board of Elections and Registration. And on June fourth of two thousand and three, the Georgia Legislature created an act. Excuse me, can you move my presentation forward, please? Go. Again. June fourth of two thousand and three, the Georgia Legislature created an act, Act Number four twenty-five, identified under OCGA twenty-one dash two dash forty. The bylaws govern the procedures, responsibilities, powers, and operations of how the board operates. You can go. The Board of Elections and Registration, we are currently working on initiatives for the board. And our areas of focus in that initiative has been working to secure a single location to house the entire elections and registration operations, which include housing for our elections equipment. We've worked with the director to establish a timeline in which we've been consistently informed about locations, actually, for the past six years. And currently, our staff operates from many locations. Our intent is to have housing with a minimum of twenty-five thousand square feet that will allow all staff and operations to be secured in one location, thereby allowing our operations to be the most efficient and effective during the elections time. What I'd like to do this evening is introduce you to our board member, Pat Pular. I wanted to highlight her, Ms. Pular's term ends on the thirty first of this month. Board Member Pular served with the Clayton County Board of Elections and Registration for the citizens of Clayton County from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twenty-two. She was instrumental in implementing many policy changes and the growth of the board. She has a long history of the election process and is an advocate for citizens' rights to vote here in Clayton County and in the state. She is a member of the Georgia Association of Voter Registration and Election Officials. I'd also like to give congratulations to our staff, who has done an amazing job during the election year of two thousand and twenty-two. Season, we actually conducted four elections this year and two audits. And our staff has gone above and beyond their duty to assure that the citizens of Clayton County are counted, that the citizens of Clayton County's votes are counted within a fair and transparent election. Clayton County, currently, we have two hundred six thousand five hundred and eighty-five registered voters in our county. And we operate seventy precincts within this county. So, I'd like to again give kudos to our election staff. And the poll workers were amazing. They gave up their Thanksgiving holiday to come in and work that Sunday. Early voting was the, soon as we could get them in, and we could only get staffed those six locations for that early voting. But all of our poll workers and all of our staff were in it to win it, with no complaints. They were willing, they gave up their holiday, and they showed up for the citizens of Clayton County. The Board of Elections also, as a board member of Elections and Registration, we do give a hundred and ten percent. Our county during elections with the direct, with the direction of our director, Shawna Dozier, and the office staff's hard work and dedication to the citizens of Clayton County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, how often do you all meet?
I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner Hambrich, because we are one of the few boards that receive a stipend. And the stipend, the contract is for a meeting once a month, but we meet quite often. And during an election season, for instance, with the elections. So, we met Friday, we'll be working this week to do the audits. And we would normally, outside of election season, we meet once a month. But during the election season, we may meet a couple of times a month, three times a month. So, what we've started to do is combine our meetings. If we have to have a special call meeting to select additional polling locations, anything we do, we meet and agree on it. And so, those meetings, we absolutely have, we've been busy this year. So, we do meet more than once. But our contract is only for a stipend for that once a month.
Okay, so what day and time?
So, we meet every month, second Tuesday of every month, at four thirty in our temporary location at the bonkers. Until, because we, our, our current location is so small, we can't meet in the conference rooms at the, at one twenty-one McDonough Street, because it's just not enough room. And we've had a lot of people showing up because it is election year. And you know, you got the watchers and the observers and everybody that wants to be involved. So, they're able to show up. That room was actually too small, so I made a motion to move our meetings to the, to the bonkers until further notice. So, we, we've been told that, I think our location, I can't think of the address, is it seventy-nine, what's the...
It's next to seventy-nine eleven, next to police headquarters.
Next to the police headquarters is, is where the bunker is. I keep repeating that address, but I can't remember it off the top of my head. Seventy-nine forty-six North McDonough Street is where we actually meet now. And from what I understand, we are supposed to be going into a location next year. But I'm not sure, I did see that Ben resigned. So, I don't know where that leaves us.
Banished.
Thank God. Okay, yeah, so, we're looking at moving to a new location. I believe we were given March. But like I said, this has been a six-year run, and we actually feel like redhead stepchildren. Because we're giving a location, and then somebody else...
Isn't that why you're in red hair?
Yeah. And then somebody else gets to move in, the animal control gets to move in, or IT or code enforcement. So, we've been shuffled around, and we honestly are looking forward to the location that's being prepared for us. Supposedly, the DHP is going...
Do you want to announce where the auditing is going to be, the audit?
The audit is going to be at the South Clayton Recreation Center. And so, the audit will be on the thirteenth and the fourteenth next week. I'm sorry, fourteenth and the fifteenth? That's, yes, this week. So, we'll be doing the audits there at the South, South Clayton Recreation Center. And people are welcome to come and observe if they would like to. So, there is a location for observers to be able to come out and look at the process. And actually, if they want to participate in the process, there are rules and regulation on how to be selected for, for the different parties. But as far as observation, I believe they only have to show up.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I want to thank you for all your hard work. I want to ask you, how often does your board train?
We train once a year, for instance, our conference is coming up, so we're certified every year by the state as, as election officials. So, we will be doing our GIACava conference in February. And we get our certifications there.
Okay, so everybody's up to date, you all have gotten your certifications?
Yeah, you can't be on this board without completing your training.
And also, I wanted to ask you, when is your next retreat? When is your board going to meet? Because I know you all have new board members that will be onboarding, so when will be your next retreat?
Well, we haven't decided on the retreat, but our conference is actually in February, will be in Jekyll Island. And the new board members will be able to participate in that. I believe they come in in January, but the conference is actually Valentine's weekend in Jekyll Island. Where we do the conference, they get their certifications, they get their, their cards identifying them as election officials. And a lot of good training, and the information from that conference is amazing because it's coming from the state. And we get information there that we just are not going to get, sort of on our own.
Well, I'd like to attend your retreat when you guys have one.
Yeah, our retreat will probably, we will have to vote on a retreat time, submit it to the director, and allow her to come up with a recommendation for us to do the retreat where the new members can then come in, where a lot of the previous members, they didn't have the opportunity for them to be able to come in and then have the office, staff, and the director go over the processes of what everyone does so that you have an idea. Because elections is a very intricate, oh my God, it's a very intricate process. There are a lot of steps to it, and it takes a long time to actually gain that knowledge. So, with the retreat, you get a very good start.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your presentation, and despite you being shuffled around, y'all are doing a fantastic job. Thank you and your staff for all that y'all doing here in Clayton County.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Housing Authority Presentations. Anybody here from the Housing Authority?
All right, Dr. Jackson.
Great day, everyone. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners, good evening. I want to give you, I'm Dr. Candace Jackson, and I am the Board Chair for the Housing Authority of Clayton County. I have with me Commissioner Robert Payne, who is one of the members. And we're going to do an overview tonight to give you some information about who we are, what we do, what works, succession planning, and plans for handling the Living Faith One Street Residential Senior Housing Project that we have in front of us right now. Who we are. The Housing Authority was created in nineteen eighty-two due to the lack of multifamily housing developments in the county. The idea was to attract developers and to act as a financial conduit, providing tax-exempt funding. These projects, projects coming into our county are intended to provide quality, affordable housing for Clayton County's citizens. Who we are. We are a unique organization that does not operate like a typical housing authority. Most people think of the Housing Authority are more familiar with Jonesboro Housing Authority, where they issue vouchers, help with section aid, and have buildings, units, that, that the, that's available to low-income citizens of Clayton County. And we are not like that. We're considered a quasi-autonomous, non-governmental organization. What that means is that it is our organization that receives funding from government, but is able to act independently. Our mission is simple. It is to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing to residents in Clayton County that meets our income requirements. Our vision is to make a difference in the community, one family at a time, through our funding sources and our programs. The Housing Authority has two main sources of income that allows us to operate independently and efficiently. The two main sources of income is our bond fees, the fees private developers pay in order to receive tax-exempt financing. It's a win-win situation for our county because we have money to help our citizens and the developers get the tax-exempt status. We also have, we're property ownerships of Premier Gardens. This complex bring in revenue of approximately ninety thousand dollars a month. That helps us to fund our programs. That helps us to fund our programs along with other grants that we receive. One of the programs that we have is one that to improve the quality of life for our citizens and improve the urban blight that visitors see when they first enter our county, especially off major exits. And that is our HUG program. We like to think of it as one that we can provide our citizens with funds to repair their damaged property, damaged natural gas, plumbing, electrical and severe structural damage. The program gives priority to projects on the basis of the severity of the problem. The first priority is gas, gas leaks, electrical hazards and ADA handicapped accessibility. Our second priority is sewer, septic tanks and severe water problems, health-related issues. And the third priority is HVAC. And that includes air conditioning rehab during the summer and furnace repair in the winter and replacement of water heaters. Grants are available up to seven thousand dollars per house and considered a once-in-a-lifetime benefit. We are looking at, because of the price of material, increasing that dollar amount. The second program is our Emergency Assistant Program. And it was a result of the two thousand twenty pandemic. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was awarded to HAC from the county to administer to residents who were directly impacted by the results of COVID. Based on the overwhelming number of people that we were serving under that grant, HAC decided to add an additional three hundred thousand dollars to ensure that we could expand the program and help those families, continue to help those families in need. The programs that we assist with is mortgage and rental assistance and Georgia Power past due bills. The impact, the impact of the HUG program, total spent in fiscal year two, twenty-two, and I've only gone through the third quarter, is over one hundred and ten thousand dollars. And one hundred and three families were approved under our HUG program. The EAP program, which is our second program, we spent a total amount of over two hundred and forty thousand dollars for that administering that program and we served a hundred and twenty families. The increase in the second and third quarter was applications that we received from the courts starting June through August, which was one forty-five. And we had seventy-three referrals to Hearts to Nurture and the American Children Fund, uh, American Children Fund. And sixty-five no longer needed assistance. And now we're faced with two hundred and fifty pending applications waiting for action. And that was for a lack of staff. It was a point where we didn't have any staff whatsoever working on these programs, but we've rectified that situation. So I also wanted to talk about what works. One of the things that we started this summer was to participate in booth activities and celebrated events in the county. You would see us in, at different functions with our applications ready to take the information from citizens of Clayton County. That really increased some of our numbers and to pretty much get us out in the community and have a presence along with a footprint so that people will understand what we do. Because I know prior to coming to the Housing Authority, I really had no idea what the Housing Authority was. I thought it was like Jonesboro, that they did vouchers in Section Eight. And so we just want to let them know, the citizens of Clayton County, what we, what we have available for them. And so we're trying to work on collaborations. And we did work with a collaboration with Chief Magistrate Judge Wright Hill. And then Ms. Tayeekya, I hope, I'm not, I know I'm not pronouncing her wrong name. Takiya Thomas, she's the Department of Information Technology. And one of the things that I found out is going to one of the meetings where she invited a focus group of people who dealt specifically with housing, is that a lot of our residents do not have access to Internet. So we have these programs and how can they apply? They don't have a ride to get to us and they don't have Internet. So they're working on a grant that would allow Internet for the entire county. So we're hopeful for that. But the full impact that I would want to submit to the board is to create a countywide portal that would provide information, good information. So when we have people that come to the Housing Authority and they can't pay their bills, their bills, but they need food. Or they can't pay their bills and they need some other type of service, we look in the, the help book and those numbers, some numbers are disconnected, some numbers are not being answered, there's no way to leave a message. And we need to have something that we can use to refer our citizens to get the help that they need. And then we can find out, help them from falling behind and do what it is that we can do to help those families. And then we also need to make sure that they are vetted, that they don't just have a name and an organization that's not really helping our citizens. We need to be able to call and have some valid information. That is what we would need to be able to function at our fullest. Also, where we are with our succession planning, as you know, we no longer have an executive director in place. So one of the things that we did was to implement a succession policy to allow the board to act on behalf of the ED until the position is filled. We have a phenomenal team of professionals and subject matter experts that works with the Housing Authority as well as govern the Housing Authority. We have an attorney, Ken Brown, a financial advisor, Matthew Arrington of Terminus. We have an accountant, Viva Singler. She's the CPA in a longtime partnership with HAC. We also have certified board commissioners and that's Commissioner Hall with over thirty years of expertise in the housing arena. We have Commissioner Robert Payne, who is a real estate agent and a community activist. We have Commissioner James Fambro. He's a corporate leadership and management experience, well, he has corporate leadership and management experience across multiple industries as well as a consistent record of community acti, acti, activism, I'm sorry. Activism, okay. And then we have Commissioner Hilda Myers-Reed. She has, she's the vice chair and she has a master's in business administration and is a, and is a program professional, providing staffing for contractors. And finally, I have a master's in public administration, level two graduate of the Government Procure, Procurement Institute and Leadership Clayton. Also attended the Regional Leadership Institute, based on a selection from my peers. We are one team, one vision, whose primary focus is providing citizens to this, providing assistance to the citizens of Clayton County. We also have some new hires because we do have that backlog. And so we're making sure that we have people in place that can get the job done. We have an office administrator who has extensive Housing Authority knowledge. She was a previous employee and she's back and she's helping us out a whole lot. We also have a master level lead program specialist with extensive program development knowledge. So we're really pleased about our team, what we have and what we foresee in the future. So what's ahead? Next slide. We have hired a professional to assist us with an executive director search. The job has been posted. We're going to do open interviews in three levels and then we'll make a final offer. And Mr. Payne, we'll get into more of the details of where we are with the four million dollars. But the truth of the matter is our ED resigned after signing the MOU agreement for the project. Unfortunately, the agreement was made, was not made clear to the board, the level of expectations in the administration of this grant. The agreement was never approved or signed by the board. Since becoming aware of this agreement, the board has taken steps to address the issue. One thing, number one, we have placed it on our agenda for the January twenty-third meeting for a vote. Two, again, we've adopted an emergency policy to delegate a capable team member to handle immediate affairs of the Housing Authority. And third, we have appointed one of our board members, Commissioner Robert Payne, to work with our attorney, our financial advisor and all parties involved to bring back a clear understanding of what is required from the board. And then we can choose to commit or not to commit. And so the information that we have, Commissioner Payne has had a discussion with our attorney and he's going to share that information now.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman. Two things real quick. We are one of the boards that does not get a stipend. Just, I'm just kidding, I'm just having fun with you.
Well, you can't.
Yeah, I'm, oh, I'm just playing games. I'm just having fun with you. I know that. And just play in light.
But you do get travel or something, travel?
Oh, we, we're not worried about that, Commissioner. It's, it's just making light of a, you know, she made a point to say we're one of the ones that get a stipend. So it was just to have fun. And the other point before I go into the, the senior project, not to put any kind of fault or blame with the magistrate, but Commissioner, we've got to do something. Y'all, I've, I had a conversation with Henry County and Fayette County and Cobb County magistrate courts. Because we deal with this backlog the magistrate has, we, with Premier Gardens, we have a list of people that have not paid. And I mean, I could go into that, but that's not what we're here for. I can tell you, Henry County, Fayette County, Cobb County are reporting to me, they have zero backlog, zero. And when I call the magistrate here in Clayton County, and I'm not calling Judge Keisha Wright Hill, but when I do call, contact Clayton magistrate, I'm being told it could be three years to get something hurt. I can tell you, because of what I do full-time as a real estate agent in and around, and I'm born and raised here, I can tell you, I don't want to go into the numbers right now, but the numbers of homes that risk going into foreclosure because of people not paying rent, if it comes through, the detrimental effect of this county that it could have, we're talking maybe not two thousand eight levels, but in that direction. This is not something we are ready to face. Something has to be done, okay? But that said, as far as the senior facility, the Housing Authority is very excited about this project. We do believe that the senior facility is needed. We don't believe that there is a lot of affordable, quality senior homes or, or residents in Clayton County. We believe it's a perfect spot for it, over there off of Old Dixie in that area, behind the church. I will say, we're still at the very front end of this. We don't have a lot to work off of just yet. All we have is a memorandum of understanding that was presented to us that was signed by our previous executive director without our knowledge. So we're going off of that at this point, okay? That said, we have had our attorney read through it and work through with some of your staff to understand what is expected of us in this. And we're still looking through that at this point. We're, we're digesting it because, just to give you an example, we would be responsible for providing you guys a report as far as the financial spending in this. And I, and it, it's very vague, this memorandum of understanding. It says, "Report back." Well, does that mean pictures on the progress of the bill? Does it mean a financial audit monthly? Does it mean checks and balances needs to be sent to you? We don't know. So these are things that we're working through with your staff. Mr. Reed is involved, I believe. Sasha, you know, Sasha, I'm sorry, Shalonda Smith, our attorney, and then of course, the developer. You know, something that I'm working through and listen, this is, we don't know just yet. But I want to make sure that before we do this, that we have some answers to some things. You know, and a lot of these documents that I see, I'll give you as an example, this document that was sent over requesting us to be here, it references that the four million dollars are, and I quote, "to the Housing Authority in connection with a senior living facility developed with Living Faith Tabernacle and One Street Residential." But nowhere in that does it reference the other project that is associated with this, which is single-family attached homes. I, I want to make sure that, because every document that I see from the county referencing this project, it's only referencing the senior facility and it doesn't reference anything to do with the for-profit development right behind it. And two million of this would be used for the senior facility, but two million in this memorandum of understanding hidden in the fine print down below references for this attached, single-family development. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page as to what this money's being used for, how we're supposed to allocate these funds and that it is in accordance with ARPA and what they're expecting. Because I, I do see, coming up on your agenda this evening, is a conversation about ARPA nonprofit. And my understanding is that ARPA was supposed to be for nonprofit, but this development is a for-profit venture. So I want to make sure that we are acting in good faith with the monies that are given to us as a county and as well as a housing authority, that we're doing the right things with these monies. So at this point, we are very much at the beginning stages of this. We don't have a lot to go over with you. I will tell you, we do believe that by the time that this project is solidified and inside of this memorandum of understanding, it's pretty clear that development here, it can't even start till at least the end of two thousand twenty-three, if not the beginning of two thousand twenty-four. We do believe we will have an executive director in place. We have hired an HR director contractor that's helping us with our staffing issues. We do believe we have a goal to have a, a new executive director in before the end of quarter two of this upcoming year, hopefully, really by quarter one, but we're on search. We're searching for that. We do believe we'll have the staff. We do believe we'll have the capabilities to manage whatever it is you're looking for out of us, but we do want to have some definable, measurable goals in place so we know what we're doing. What can I answer for you?
All right, thank you for your presentation and the information you have provided. I have one question on my own. Dr. Jackson, you mentioned, or if I heard you correctly, and he just mentioned about HR director. Did you say, did you say that you have hired or using a company for the day-to-day operations?
No.
Since the director has gone?
Not the day-to-day operation. A lot of the stuff that we needed done was not available to us. And we knew that we had to have an HR person come in, like the administration, the paycheck, how did that work? All of, we didn't know the benefits that was given to the employees. And we had to do a lot of research on that, so we had someone come in to do that for us. Also, we had no staff, so we had to have someone come in and recruit, post the positions and vet the people that we screened to hire for one of our positions.
So is that the same person or did you hire two?
No, it's one person.
One person doing, doing both of those duties and responsibilities, okay.
She handling all of our HR.
And who is this person?
It's Quarterman Consulting. Victoria Quarterman, it's, it's Quarterman Solutions.
Thank you. Any other questions from Dr. Jackson?
Yes, I do. Well. Well, one thing, and this is for Ms. Johnson too, are you all sending in your minutes, your board minute, minutes to the county every month? Did you all know about that?
Yes, ma'am, we send out, then Friday, that would be signed.
Okay, what about the Housing Authority?
Those minutes were supposed to be submitted each month.
Yes, after each meeting?
After each meeting, yeah, five days, we have five days to submit the minutes. And so they should be.
So that's a yes.
That's a yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Let's see, was one other thing. And you all have explained the main question I had regarding the monies that were sent over, the four million?
Wait, wait, hold on one second, let's go back to the minutes. Because we were told that the minutes, because when we looked at it, there were, it was delayed. And we were told that those minutes were sent in and they were just not posted. So they were, we were under the impression that they were sent in like they were supposed to be sent in within five days.
Right, because you don't actually post them until the next meeting, to be honest with you.
Correct.
Yeah, right, I served on that board.
Well, stay up.
Right, and let me say, give a little kudo here. That HUG program was started with my presence on that board. I was one of the folk that recommended that and all, and we got that started years ago, so.
It's a good, a very good program.
Just a little knowledge there. Well, I wanted to be clear on those minutes, because that's one of the things that the board would like to have. And I don't know how up to date you all are or the other boards, but it sounds like elections is right on target with that. But that's one of the reasons too, that my request to have these boards come in and tell us, you know, what you do, so the citizens of the county will know also, and we can keep up with what you all are doing. Because I don't attend board meetings for all these different boards or whatever, but that is a way of us keeping up with what's going on and all, so.
Well, we do have our coordinator who's taking the minutes now, and she's making sure that they're posted.
Great, well, okay, posting is something different now.
Well, submit it to the county.
Okay.
Submit it to the county.
Okay, okay, thank you so much, and thanks for that explanation, because I was going to ask that question regarding that.
Any other questions?
Yes. Who's, which search firm is heading up the search for the executive director?
Quarterman Solutions.
Quartermans as well?
She's posted on our national site, the National Association of Housing, and Monster Indeed as well.
Can you elaborate a little more, I'm a little confused on this for-profit residential? And?
Commissioner Davis, so again, I'm going to speak in general terms at this point, because I don't have a lot of details right now. We're finding that a lot of this information was not delivered to us. And I don't want to go into a lot of he-said, she-said kind of business, but we're cleaning up some, some bad management, okay? And so that said, we were initially told that this four million was going to be used for Habitat for Humanity projects. And when I, this is from our previous director. And then we found out that we were partnering up with One Street and Living Faith, which we're like, hey, that sounds good, let's look into this. We actually toured one of One Street's facilities in Fayetteville. We know they're doing one in downtown Jonesboro, we were impressed with the facility that we saw. We were assured that it would match, almost identical to the facilities that they've already got. And, but when I asked to see the site plan, I saw a phase two. But nobody was referencing a phase two. They kept wanting to reference phase one. Well, finally, after some back and forth, we learned that, well, phase two will happen after phase one, obviously, but that they are very intertwined and that they both have to happen for this, to work numerically speaking, for this developer. And I brought up the question of, well, why are we doing this, these attached, single-family homes behind this sixty-two and older facility when the other properties that you have do not have this? Why are we doing it here but not there? Because honestly, I love what they build in all these other places, they build in very nice neighborhoods, but why are we doing it here in Clayton? It's very important to me that we, as Clayton County, stop getting people's subpar projects. It's very important to me that we get treated just like any other county. And then the conversation, they really wanted to steer clear of it, to be quite honest with you. And I'm still looking into it, but all that to say, this is a for-profit developer, there's no question about it. And they're wonderful, I love them, they're great. But I still don't have a clear understanding of the who, what, when, or why how in phase two of this.
I guess my thing is, when the board does get a clear understanding, I'd like for the BLC to be updated on this issue.
What, do I just send in a request for a work session slot with you at that point?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, let me, let me say this. Because this is a positive project.
Yes.
I'm sorry that you all were not informed of what was going on. But I have been informed of this, and I have been on the tour of one of the other projects that they've done and all. And let me just say, it is on the up and up. So I don't want the board, this board, or anybody in the public to think that it is not. It really is, and again, I don't know what happened with the information that you all either were or were not given, but I don't want us to sound like we are downing the project, because it is a very good project. We may need to just have someone, either from the church or from the project, to come over and explain this to you all. And come here and explain to us too, but it is a good project, let me just say that. I don't, I don't want to keep doing the negative to this, to something that's really good, it's really good for the county, and it's going to definitely be good for that Old Dix, Old Dixie area.
We agree, we love the senior living aspect, absolutely.
Anytime you have senior living, it's a good project.
And that's not the line of caution, it's just a matter of with hearing that, just to have some clarity on the subject matter.
Commissioner Hambrick, I want to make sure that you know, again, we believe that they are a wonderful developer. They do great work, hear me say that. I've walked two facilities of theirs. We just have some questions that haven't been answered, and some things that are in gray area at this point. And when I see things like this document from Mr. Reed asking us to be here and reference this as only a senior living facility, and four million for the senior living facility. But then I know that hidden down in this memorandum of understanding, it's references two million going for attached family, single-family homes. I want to make sure that we're on the up and up in all of this. I don't want after the fact, someone to say, well, you didn't tell us.
And let me say this, and we'll move on, but we appreciate you doing your due diligence. We absolutely want to make sure that any project that comes to Clayton County, we dot our i's, cross our t's, everything's on the up and up, because we want to make sure that these, especially our seniors, when they, we don't want to deprive them of this great development that's going to happen. So as you develop and get more information, make sure you get more information. And then please come back before us to give us some additional information. Commissioner Anderson, did you have anything before?
I'm good, like I said.
Could I ask you just a clarifying point?
Quick, quick, go ahead, yes ma'am.
Like we were saying, anything that we do for the seniors, we need to focus on that, especially within our communities, because our seniors need great places to live.
Absolutely.
And we, and so, you know, whatever you can do, whatever questions that you all need, let's, you know, let's try to keep it positive. And just like Chairman was saying, and Vice Chair was saying, just come back to us, let us know what's going on, and we'll move forward from there.
Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Hamburg, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but we are one hundred and ten percent behind the senior living, we are ecstatic, hear us say that. We also just want to make sure that we're operating in our lane when it comes to ARPA funds. Okay? Because my understanding is ARPA is a nonprofit, and this is a for-profit, so I want to make sure. That was going to be my clarifying question that I asked you, Chairman, was, are these funds supposed to be nonprofit? Or can they come eagle, I guess, can they be used for?
I doubt that, but again, that's part of your due diligence, work with Mr. Reed over there, whoever else, your attorney, on the Housing Authority, but yes, that's a very important question to ask before you expend these funds.
Yeah.
You know, you're not looking like you look good in orange, so please.
Why do you think I, well, I wanted to put it on the record, okay? But trust me, we want the senior living, and we're going to do what it takes to have.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lexi Poe, Policy and Grants Management, Fire Department.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, I'm going to be brief. You're very welcome, sir. It's okay, it was implied.
Y'all put the timer on, five minutes.
I don't need that long, ma'am, unless, unless y'all get long-winded with questions. But one of the things that we've been trying to do out of the COO's office is find ways to streamline, especially our policies and procedures and practices, to make them easier for not only our, our employees to get ahold of and access, but to have a central repository when this board makes policy decisions. A lot of the questions we ask ourselves is where is that policy housed? More importantly, how does someone find it after it's been approved by the board? So a couple of years ago at the Fire Department, we partnered with Lexi Poe to revamp our entire policy manual and procedure manual. And basically what they do is they bring in a collection of policies that have been vetted, litigated, and tested, and are rooted in both federal and state law, so they are specific to the state of Georgia. But they encompass a lot of the federal statutes that come down that govern the work that a county government does. They specialize in law enforcement and fire, but now they're getting into the local government. So the COO and I have been talking about this for quite some time, and we feel now is the pertinent time to bring this forward, to continue to streamline and revamp our policies. I provided you a packet in front of you, and I'll just kind of run through a little bit of kind of the benefits, and I'll draw your attention to just a couple pages, so you can kind of see. But the benefit that Lexi Poe brings is it gets rid of inconsistent and outdated policies. One of the challenges we have is as laws change, our policies must change. The problem is we don't often know the laws changed, until, you know, we have an issue that comes before this board or a department head. What this policy does is as federal laws change, the policies automatically get updated, and those notifications get sent to us to let us know what's changed. Chief Richardson is actually in the backend of our system now. So what I wanted to show you is, as we get updates, you'll see them on the screen here. If we just click on the child abuse policy that we have in our manual, it'll tell you that the child abuse policy's been updated as of October twenty-one. There was content in the mandatory notification, has been updated. But then it takes it a step further and gives you the House bills or governing legislation that caused this effort. And then we simply, you know, click accept, and then it automatically updates our policies across the board. So as we're making policies and decisions, we can always rest assured that they are in keeping with not only state law but federal law as well. So what this would bring in is it would bring in a comprehensive local government administration policy manual. We would take it and blend it with the current policies that the board has to include all of our HR policies, civil service rules and regulations. Part of our issue is a lot of our policies are actually rooted in county ordinance, so they become very difficult to go find when you have a problem or a challenge that you need to address. This would help streamline that. It does come with daily training bulletins, these are automated, it'll pick a policy, it'll send it out to all county employees and ask them questions about the policy, give them a scenario, and then they can go react with it, so that they're constantly training and learning about the policies of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. We talked briefly about the policy updates. It does have a web-based delivery platform and an app that comes standard with it, so employees can readily access the county policy manual. And then as new policies are sent out, it sends an automatic update, and then they have to physically go in and acknowledge that they have received the policy. And how we track that is, it actually comes with a report that we can run that will list all the policies, give you the employee name, where they work, what the policy was, the date that policy was issued, and the date they accepted the policy. Obviously, if there's a blank, they didn't acknowledge that they read and accepted the policy. So if there becomes a disciplinary action we have to deal with, and they say, well, I wasn't aware, we can say, well, that's because you didn't read the policy and accept it. So it kind of gives us a checks and balances against the county, the county policy manual. Reports, there's a variety of reports that we can run, just what policies are we seeing troubles with? When were they last updated? How many employees have read it, have been trained on it? If we start to see an incident, if county legal is having to deal with an issue and somebody challenges whether we've trained on our policies, one-stop, one-shop to be able to give you a report of how often our employee base has been trained or quizzed on a specific policy within the county. And then kind of the last bonus to this is a part of the Lexi Poe system that we are looking at purchasing. It does have a full Grant Finder subscription that goes out and looks at more than ten thousand federal, state, and corporate, and foundational grants, and consolidates those into one centralized location. So it's not a separate standalone system that's functioning within our policy, it becomes all one. So the policy management and the grants management all kind of becomes one process and one program here within the county. One of the things that I did want to bring your attention to, just to kind of give you some access, if you go just a couple pages back, you'll come to a policy that's entitled Policy Ten Twenty-Three. This is obviously a new policy that we've never had before in the Fire Department, but we have it now. And it covers lactation breaks for our new moms, it's a federal standard. But what I wanted to show you is, you can see under each section, it lets you know where that content's coming from, that this is indeed a federal policy. We do not have a choice but to comply with it. So anywhere you see federal, you can see where a federal policy may have been modified. There are certain aspects about state law that may modify a federal law, so that is denoted in here. The beauty is, anytime there's a federal change to this law, it's done automatically. It will also tell you if language contained in a policy is best practice, which means that may be something that was just brought in at the local level. So what we found by implementing this over at Fire and EMS is it took our procedure manual from roughly about two thousand pages down to a handbook about this. And even more important, it's now digital, so all of our employees have rapid access to it. And it helps Attorney Reed and his staff when our policies are rooted in federal and state law. And as I said, they've, they've been tested, they've been tried, and more importantly, they've been litigated and been shown to be able to withstand that scrutiny. So that's the short nuts-and-bolts overview, we'll be bringing this back to you for a, for a vote at an upcoming board meeting, just to implement the system and get it up and running here within the county. So with that, I'll take a deep breath and ask if you have any questions.
All right, thank you for that presentation. What I like about the system is it holds employees accountable to make sure they read and are updated on policy. So that, from that perspective, that, that's a big plus, so I appreciate that. Any questions for Chief Murkison, Commissioner Davis?
Only one, which is, how do you, how do you consider the return on investment of this product with the, with the cost?
So the beauty of, from what we've seen, our ROI has, we've realized it probably within the first year and a half to two years with just the amount of education we've had about our policies. You'll be surprised how many people can work for an agency for ten years and not know all the policies that govern their employment here. And the reason of that is, is we've realized that over the years, you know, we've been, Fire and EMS has been here for now fifty-three years, and our policy manuals have constantly gotten larger and larger and larger, simply because we don't take out the outdated ones, we just create new ones, and typically they have a name attached to it, right? Somebody does something, and now there's the Turner policy, or the Davis policy, right? Whatever the case may be. So what we've seen now is we have a more informed workplace. And then of course, as a department head, or as a leader, or as an attorney, if you have to defend said policy, now you can go back to concrete, irrefutable evidence that, hey, this is when this policy was created, this is when it was adopted, and this is how we've trained, and this is how we've enforced it locally throughout the county. So part of the issue now is when we go look for a policy, everybody has to have a conversation about, well, is this the most current version? Right? Because we're not really sure which department or whose desk that policy resides on. And in some cases, we found that they may be ten, fifteen years old. And then, you know, hey, that state law changed five years ago, why didn't your policy change? Well, because we didn't know the law changed. So this fixes all that. So I think from a legal perspective, and Chuck may be able to answer this, I think it would serve benefits just in his shop immediately right out of the gate.
Just nod, Chuck, just nod.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Oh, yeah, I got a question, about how much is this going to cost?
Yes, sir, so I'm glad you asked that. So the local government administration policy manual, all the daily training bulletins that we talked about with the supplemental publication service is thirty-five thousand dollars a year. We did get a six thousand dollar discount, because we're already signed up and utilizing their service. There will be a one-time fee of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars to implement it. That basically means they take all of our current policies and procedures and convert them into their system, and then crosswalk the policies against what comes standard with the, with the book. So first year, you're looking at fifty-seven thousand, two thirty-eight, twenty-five. After that, it will just be the thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And that funding is available in the IT budget.
Is that in your, that is in your fire fund?
It's not in the fire fund, ma'am, but it's in the IT budget. It's not in the fire fund, ma'am, but it's in the IT budget. But we do have the money for the fire policy manuals in the fire fund. Yes, ma'am, we certainly do.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right. All right. Medical examiner's infrastructure update. Chief Roberts. Number six.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. It is my goal to be faster than the Chief of Staff slash Fire Chief.
And I believe you can do it too.
But I want to briefly bring you an update on our medical examiner infrastructure. And just to refresh your memory, during the third quarter of 2019, the county was notified by the GBI that they wanted to update their year-to-year contract as it was no longer covering their costs to provide death investigation services to the county. The BOC approved the new payments to the GBI for the medical examiner services in January 2020, but the GBI said they were no longer interested in maintaining that relationship. Thus, they extended their contract until the county was able to establish a vendor. To do so, we created a task force of leaders in the county and was able to identify a vendor. That vendor was procured through Central Services Contract and awarded to Coswell Truman LLC on February 1, 2021. You now know that as the Clayton County Medical Examiner's Office. Based on the previous recommendation of the task force, our long-term solution for the county was to establish a full-service medical examiner's office. Currently, our Clayton County Medical Examiner is working out of our Clayton County Police Department Headquarters in our office space, and the storage of deceased bodies are being maintained at the warehouse at Battle Creek using our mobile morgues right now. The medical examiner's infrastructure project was identified as a viable initiative through the American Rescue Plan Act, i.e. ARPA funds. Those ARPA funds were identified in the amount of $5,105,400. They were allocated to support the medical examiner's infrastructure as of March 22, 2022. The task force identified a county-owned property located on Slate Road as a potential infrastructure site on August 26. But as we debated and analyzed that property, inflation came. Operational costs were considered. The task force unveiled concerns with operational costs of running a full-scale medical examiner's facility. A recommendation was made to utilize county-owned property located in Rex on District 1, near the Henry County-Clayton County line. And that property has the potential to be used for other law enforcement uses, but as of this date, we could use that area as a site for a medical examiner's building. And those challenges that I talked about relate to inflation cost of demolition of the site at the Slate Road building, then the cost of building a new structure, and sustainability costs, primarily the cost of a pathologist. Pathologist salaries range anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000 a year on the high end, and they are in small supply nationally. So, therein lies the challenge. The task force decided it would be best for us to just create a structure with room to grow for our medical examiner's office in the future, instead of going down the road of this full-scale facility with there being a lack of pathologists, an increase in inflation related to construction, and demolition. Here you see the site I was talking about on District 1. It's outlined in blue in the corner, but a more detailed picture will follow. Outlined in purple in that top corner there, that green space that is 42 acres owned by the Clayton County, and we just want to carve out a small space at this time for a medical examiner's structure. The task force is requesting approval of the site location and the use of the ARPA funds for the construction of the new facility at this location. A building and maintenance is working with the medical examiner's office to provide central services with a scope of work for the new building. And with that, time, questions?
I think you went over, but anyway, go back, go back to the picture of the wood lot.
Okay.
So, is that a housing structure that's located in the middle? What's that structure that looks like? It's right here?
I can't see. Yes. It's not a housing structure. That's a building that was associated with the previous horse park.
So, you're talking about building in that area, or carving out a different location that would have to clear cut and build new?
As we were talking about, a new location, and we drew a circle here, and then come up on the picture down here, this green space, close to the roadway, and leaving opportunities for growth for whatever county or the board approves with the remaining 40 acres.
So, you talk about inflation and other costs. $5 million is allocated to this project?
That's affirmative, sir.
And you're going to build something clear cutting?
Whatever $5 million would get us, sir.
That's a shack, buddy.
Right? And that's, that's exactly why we had to reset as a group and scale down on what we envisioned in the beginning as far as a full-scale medical examiner's facility.
Well, let me say this. We definitely need a medical examiner's facility, and if we're going to build it, we need to build it right and build it for expansion. And not to mention, this area, well, this area is probably a perfect site for it to be at. So, yeah, it's definitely going to cost a little bit more money than that, though. Are there any other questions for Chief?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer.
I'm not sure if this is a chief question or a COO question, but you're saying, is it going to be fully funded from the ARPA funds?
When we were awarded those funds, it predated the inflation. And to the chairman's point, my hope is that we could build a structure with room to grow within the $5 million funds that were allocated. Our intent is to have a structure that gives our current contractors' office space, and also gives us the ability to relocate those mobile morgues from the Battle Creek Warehouse to this location, and should something change economically, provide an opportunity to grow into a full-scale medical examiner's office in the future.
Okay. How, how long are those ARPA funds available, and how long do we have to spend them? Does that date exceed?
Yes, ma'am. So, the ARPA money expiration date is 2026. So, we have to 2026. So, any expenses to sustain the medical examiner post-2026, we will have to find another funding source.
Okay. So, that means we need to get, we need to break ground or something in 2023.
To Vice Chair's question, does the money have to be expended, or is the project already named?
Has to be expended by the end of 2026. That's correct.
So, we need to get started, it sounds like.
Sounds like it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, because that time will go so fast, because I don't know what happened in '22.
You're right. Any other questions? Well, thank you, Chief. Appreciate you. Yeah, I take, no, you get a brownie point.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next up, we are not having the employee presentation. I3 Impact Infrastructure Investing.
Chairman, real quick, one of the things the board was asking for earlier under Chairwoman Johnson, the risk-limiting audit is slated for Wednesday and Thursday, December 14th and 15th, from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the South Clayton Recreation Center. So, those dates are the 14th and 15th.
Okay.
Chairman, Board, Vice Chair and Board Commissioners, I have the pleasure of having I3, which stands for Impact Infrastructure and Investing. The firm is committed to partnering with public entities that are dedicated to improving and impacting local communities through infrastructure investment. As we're reviewing the Clayton County Facilities Condition Report, I3 is going to give us an update on ways that we might be able to utilize their services to help us with funding. Real quick, the Board of Commissioners adopted through Resolution 2022-188 on September 20 to do a master services agreement with them. And so what they're doing tonight is coming back with what we call a P-SAL, which is a project scope of work, to talk more about products that might be able to help us out. So, the presentations will be conducted by Mr. Greg Voach and Steve Anderson.
Thank you, Chairman Turner, Vice Chair Hammer, Commissioner Davis, and Commissioner Anderson. As Dietrich so eloquently put, our firm is really committed to partnering with public entities that are dedicated to improving and impacting the local communities through infrastructure investment. Infrastructure, obviously, is one of the most important things to a community to get right, that and education and healthcare. We're a unique design, build, finance, and maintain infrastructure model that helps you address not only deferred maintenance needs, but also capital projects going forward. A unique part of our, of our project is our pay, you pay nothing until a project is complete, so there's no money upfront. As we were just talking before, and he was talking about his coroner's office infrastructure, that could be something that we could potentially help with down the road. We're committed to make sure that local participation is a significant part of all our projects. It's very important to us to work with the community to make sure those projects stay in the community, the dollars are spent in the community here, and there's maintenance contracts coming out of this with the community. We reviewed the Clayton County Assessment, all 1,400 pages of it. We came through with a few different models, which are on the next page, a couple of opportunities for us. One of them is some fire station renovation. There's probably four or five different fire departments, need HVAC, some roof work, lighting, emergency generators, fire alarm systems. Electric vehicle fleets and charging infrastructure is another thing. I know that's top of mind with a lot of folks. A new library, it was actually here the day it was knocked down. The building next door potentially is something there. And the justice complex has about $10 to $12 million of infrastructure needs there between HVAC, roof, lighting, emergency generators, and the fire alarm system. New things that we could do, potential community centers, other things that are a part of the 1,400-page assessment. We do new build. We also do modernizations. And we're really looking to make an impact in the communities around here. We've been spending a tremendous amount of time in the Atlanta area, working with different, with different cities and counties here and education departments. So, it's an exciting time for us as a company. Steve Anderson here runs our capital group, so he talks to all our investors that want to invest in the projects, and they are very excited to be able to work and make an impact in the communities like yourselves to do those things. So, I'm trying to be as quick as everybody here, but...
Five seconds?
Yeah. So, you know, in the last page, as you said, the timeline to completion, the master service agreement you've already signed. The next part would be a project statement of work where we actually scope out a project for you, go through all the details there. Nothing is, nothing is signed until a, until notice to proceed. Once that's done, project work gets going. Our goals and what we do is, you know, is working with whoever, you know, from the procurement side in terms of contractors that you're hiring, who's coming through, to make sure that things are done in a timely, efficient manner. As they were just talking before, inflation has changed things in the last couple of years. So, the quicker projects can get done on time, on schedule, saves, saves the county money and moves things forward. And we're committed to doing work, you know, on a valves-based thing. We want to make sure it's the best project that's going to last the longest and be the most energy-efficient for the county, so going forward. Questions?
You beat the chief.
Sorry.
Okay. So, who are you all out of?
So, we are, we're here in Atlanta, but also in Metairie, Louisiana. We've spent, I've spent now 115 days in Atlanta this year so far, or nights, I should say. We're working with other folks within the county, the school district, and talking with them also. They have a lot of needs going through, and with the surrounding cities and everything here.
Okay. So, do you all act as inspectors?
No, think of us as a, think of us as a consultant we put together. So, we have design engineering partners on the front end.
Okay.
All San Engineering is, was one of our main partners. They're tremendous. They've been around for 65 years, have 2,000 engineers, do work all over the whole country with 1,600 different municipalities. And then on the back end, we have a firm, Legacy Construction, that's out of Metairie, Louisiana, that would be our owner's rep and monitoring all the maintenance, because the reason why there is deferred maintenance is people don't, they haven't done the maintenance over the years. We build in a maintenance reserve into our project cost to make sure that that maintenance is being done properly, so these assets last past their useful life. And we match up on Steve's side, on the capital side, we match up the investors to the duration of the pro, of the asset. So, if it's HVAC that lasts 20 years, investors are looking at 20 years. Could be buildings that last 30 or 40 years, insurance companies that are looking to invest over the time, so we get the cheapest rates possible for you.
Okay. Because that's one of the things that we had a discussion of in our last meeting regarding some of our new projects that have been completed, and how we having to go back and redo some of it, or almost rebuild. But anyway, okay.
Any other questions?
Yes. You talked about financing the infrastructure projects. Are there any type of projects that you do not consider?
Roads. I would say roads aren't, lighting is a big thing, too. So, whether it's internal lighting, street lighting, those things, pretty much everything, kind of but roads.
But roads, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. The infrastructure bill that was passed, what, last year, sometime, whatever, how does that affect what you all do and all?
It's a great question. So, first of all, it's actually been a benefit to us because it's brought infrastructure, the attention of everybody in every community around, how much their deferred maintenance is. And a lot of people's deferred maintenance is planning to wait till it fails.
Right.
And then it's two to four times as expensive. The nice part about in our model is at any point in time with 30 days' notice, you can buy out on the project. So, think of it as a lease on a car. You can buy it at any point in time, but when infrastructure money, and you will be getting money over the next two to eight years, you can pay down the cost of that project, or use that money for something else that goes on. So, you have that, you have a lot of flexibility. We're, we don't replace municipal bonds. We don't replace government funding or infra money. We're complementary capital to get these things, to pull the projects forward, so you can get them done. Perfect example is the ARPA money on the last project runs out in 2026. If you decided you wanted to do the bigger plan, which helps down the road, you can spend that money, and we can be the additional capital to be able to get that done. So, you can use your capital and our capital in the same project.
Chief still here?
Chief?
Nope.
No, he's gone. He ran out.
No, there he is.
He ran out.
No, no. Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me say this. The projects that you highlighted here are definitely spot-on in terms of our infrastructure needs. So, y'all have been putting in a little work, I would say. So, we appreciate what you have presented to us today, and we look forward to the next steps. Ms. COO, you have something?
Yes, sir. Chairman, I just wanted to add that one of the things the board tasked operations with is how do we add another tool to our toolbox? And this is really what this represents. We recognize that we can't always rely on the general fund and fund balance to get us out of our capital needs, and we can't always rely on the five-year re-imposition of the splosh. You know, five years sometimes is too late because the infrastructure needs in our, our inventory is needed immediately. So, this gives us another tool that we think will help us out tremendously in addressing some of our capital needs, and again, trying to be a little more creative about addressing new projects as well as some of the old as we move forward with infrastructure built out over the next couple of years. Okay?
Well, appreciate you as well, Ms. COO, for the work you put in and the forward-thinking that you're doing in reference to this. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
ARPA nonprofit grant update. Ms. Rocker?
She doesn't hear the mic, she won't.
I'm sorry? Yes, I'm, I'm clear.
Give her ten.
I'm sorry?
She gets five minutes.
Yes. She gets three.
I hear you loud and clear. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rocker?
Yes. Okay, this is just a real quick update. You've heard two of them already on how the Office of Economic Development is spending their $5 million ARPA funds. So, we recently finished our round of, for the nonprofit grant. So, just want to give you a quick update. And let me just start by saying, today was the day we actually issued our nonprofits, their grant checks, and many of them, we invited them to stay for work session, but I see some are still here in the audience, so I just want to acknowledge them for waiting this long. To personally thank you for policymakers allowing this use of the funds. So, you know, similar to rounds one and two of the Small Business Grant, we opened up our grant portal eligible for nonprofits, and the consideration that we use for eligibility requirements, where you had to be an active 501(c)(3) recognized by January 1 of 2021 or prior. You must serve Clayton County community. You must have IRS Form 990 on file, which tells, you know, the donations that you get and how you spend your money. Pitch presentation of the organization's mission to our Clayton County evaluation team, and then an internet presence through a website or social media, just to let us know who you are and you exist. We had a total of 60 applications that were reviewed by our grant administrator for those requirements I just named. 55 awards were made eligible. We're very proud of that, that we... We're very proud of that, that we were able to actually give something to just about each nonprofit in the county that applied, and we were just blown away and quite frankly humbled by what they do for this county. The nonprofits were grouped by their missions, which include food security, health, human services, services, housing, stability, social sciences, sports, recreation, and then many other unique categories that we had, would not have known about had we not done this pitch presentation. The awards ranged from $1,000 to $20,000 with the emphasis given to the weight of the evaluation scores and the pitch presentations among the missions that were identified. Over the course of two days, the nonprofits made their in-person pitch to us, and they stated their mission, how they use the grant funds if they were to get them, how the organizations benefit the county. Like, we literally asked, you know, how do you benefit the citizens? Who is your customer? The commitment of service shared by the group in accounting to protect lives and the dignities, break barriers, promote kindness, alleviate suffering, all of these things, really will make a better future for the county overall, and it was on full display in each of these missions. I can't say that enough. That's just a list or a copy of the evaluation form we used. Our staff ranged from the Office of Economic Development, Dr. Katrina Holloway from Chairman's staff, our M&amp;A Law PC, which is our third-party grant administrator, Major Ibarondo, forgive us if we misspelled that, he was ideal, our chief police, we asked his help in getting us, someone on the police force to help us evaluate. And then we had eight members of the Clayton County Youth Commissioners, who were bright students that were sophomores through seniors that helped listen to these pitches. It was amazing. This just gives you a quick breakdown of the missions, just so you can see some idea of what area of work the nonprofits worked in. Many of them crossed over, some who dealt with the housing situation also had food, a food pantry or a relationship with a, a provider that provided that service. But in hearing their pitches, you know, we heard them with full circle, everything from literacy to food to sicko cell anemia, health clinic for those without insurance, just amazing work that they are doing in our county. That's just a dis, graph to show you youth concentration versus total family concentration. I want to make this statement about how we always do our retention visits with employers. They ask, you know, how can we be engaged in the community? And so we hope, and we heard someone say this earlier, that they get calls with all kinds of situations, and they, quite frankly, don't know who to send the help to. There is no book of nonprofits in Clayton County, and there's certainly no book or go-to person who could tell you all the missions and who to call. And so this exercise has certainly given us a window into that's something we would like to create, whether it's just a directory or something that we can have and share with our organizations and our companies that want to contribute locally in this county and not give sometime to the broader, more well-known nonprofits like United Way or Hands on Atlanta. They can actually support a local nonprofit here. Also. Okay. Yeah. However, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, I sped up through all that. So here's a few pictures. This was our information session, which we made mandatory. We wanted to explain how it all worked. And then this was the actual pitch day. So some of our nonprofits you see there, we took pictures of them as they stood right here and pitched to the audience. That's our board table where we had brochures galore, we were evaluating and reading over and seeing, and then you'll see a few there, Major Ibarondo from the Police Department, and some of our ED staff members. So, okay, that's coming up next, but I can, we could talk about that later, but our very last amount of spending with the ARPA funds will be on our commercial beautification grants, which will roll out sometime in March. But can I just ask the nonprofits here to stand so you can recognize them, those that are here? Would you stand, those who are still here from our three o'clock administration? Thank you so much. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, and I know myself as well as Dr. Anderson had some words as they accepted their checks earlier today, how much we appreciate their service here in Clayton County. But right quick, two points, the registering of nonprofits, that definitely needs to happen. We, we need to find a way to make that happen. So our citizens, even if they can't find certain services provided by the county government, they can go to this registry and hopefully some, get some help from somewhere. Second thing is, I, I really love the fact that you included the youth commissioners in this, because a lot of the services that these nonprofits provide are geared towards the youth. So hearing from them is a great addition to that team. So thank you for that. Commissioner Hambrik?
More importantly, did we meet our goal?
Yes, we met our goal.
Okay.
Yeah, we expended right about $490,000 in nonprofit grants.
Right.
So.
So what, we, we have a balance there?
Yes, we do, because we're gonna use the balance on the commercial beautification for our shopping centers. You mean the balance of the $5 million?
Are we expending all of what we have as of December? What's that date?
29. Oh, no, no, that's Erap dollars. I'm ARPA for business.
That's different.
Okay.
Oh, yes. No, that's.
That's what I need to.
Commissioner Davis, you have anything?
No. Uh, Commissioner, or Doctor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson and Chairman Turner for being present.
Thank you for your presentation, and.
I have a question offline.
You got something offline?
Offline.
Okay. We stand adjourned then. Do we? Thank you all for being here to see me.